We do have more legislation for second reading, Councilmember Flaherty.
Yes, Mr. President, I move that ordinance 2119 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Second.
Thank you. I'm properly moved to second. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Yes, Brawlo.
Yes.
Volin?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Scambolory?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
And Sandberg?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. That motion passes nine zero. Mr. Flaherty, I'm sorry, Councilmember Flaherty.
I was just jumping the gun. I believe we need a reading of the ordinance. My apologies.
I was raising your hand. That has been properly moved. That ordinance 21-19 be read by the clerk by title and synopsis. Will the clerk please read?
Yes. Ordinance 2119 to amend Title 20 Unified Development Ordinance of the Bloomington Municipal Code Regarding Corrections Set Forth in Bloomington Municipal Code 2005. The synopsis is as follows. This petition contains language to sync standards with transportation plan guidance and clarifies language related to new single-family or plex residential lots, as well as language related to common areas for environmentally sensitive areas. There are five corrections identified. Your committee of the whole recommendation was due past nine zero.
Thank you. Now, Councilmember Flaherty.
Thank you. I move that ordinance 2119 be adopted.
Second.
Been properly moved to second. Mr. Robling, are you deal with this?
I am. Thank you.
Thank you.
This is 2119. This is five amendments to the Unified Development Ordinance. These amendments are needed to provide clarity on development standard requirements in subdivisions by relating them to the transportation plan, as well as correcting two items that were potentially inadvertently changed from the last UDO. This petition amends tree plot width and sidewalk multi-use path language to require widths to match the transportation plan's guidance if it is wider than the base UDO widths. Clarifies that new single-family or plex residential lots must have street frontage, but that multifamily lots are not required to have street frontage. This matches the old UDO regulation. It requires environmentally sensitive areas to be placed in a common area. Again, this matches old UDO regulation. It also syncs neighborhood intersection distances with the transportation plan. And I can answer any questions.
Thank you very much. We've been in council for any questions of city staff and Mr. Robling on ordinance 21-19. Seeing none, we'll now go to the public for comments. Well, I see public to please use the raised hand function in Zoom, or you can send our meeting host note in chat to please indicate if you have public comment this evening. Have any takers, Mr. Lucas?
Not that I see, no.
Okay, thank you. We'll return to council for any final comments on ordinance 21-19. Okay, seeing none. Will the clerk please call the roll? Ordinance 21-19.
Councilmember Volin?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Scambolory?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
And Rallo?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ordinance 21-19 was adopted nine zero. Councilmember Flaherty.
Mr. President, I move that ordinance 21-20 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Second.
Thank you. I'm properly moved and second it. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Scambolory?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
And Volin?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. That motion passes nine zero.
Okay.
Okay, let me get to my place here. It has been moved and seconded that clerk will introduce. I'm sorry, and read by, we're going to get this together here. I'm starting to get, ordinance 21-20 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only. Will the clerk please read?
Yes. Ordinance 2120 to amend Title 20 Unified Development Ordinance of the Bloomington Municipal Code Regarding Corrections Set Forth in Bloomington Municipal Code 2006. The synopsis is as follows. This petition clarifies and amends regulations in the new UDO related to administration and procedures of the UDO. Your committee of the whole recommendation was due past four zero five.
Thank you. Councilmember Flaherty.
Move that ordinance 2120 be adopted.
Second.
Thank you. Orness 21-20 has been properly movement second. Mr. Robling, you're still on? Yes.
All right, thank you. This is 2120. There are six amendments to the Unified Development Ordinance of this petition. The petition amends the requirement for minimum threshold for a major site plan and also syncs expansion limitations for buildings in the floodplain with the state code. The petition also clarifies that city of Bloomington projects are not responsible for providing erosion control or public improvement bonds. So this deletes the provision that requires major site plan review for expansions of existing developments that increase the units on a lot by 10% or more. It deletes the provision that requires major site plan review for expansions of existing developments, and that increases the gross floor area by more than 10,000 square feet or 25%, whichever is less. Also amends the minimum unit threshold for a site plan review from 30 to 50 units. Replaces languages that restricts expansion of structures in the floodplain from one-time expansions to being allowed if the state code is met. It explicitly states that erosion control bonds are not required by the city projects as the entity itself cannot bond it to itself, and it explicitly states that public improvement bonds are not required for city project, again, as the entity cannot bond to itself. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions from council members? Councilmembers, Cambolory?
Yes, thank you. I believe we spoke last week, Mr. Robley, about coming back to us with some data about how many different projects we're missing if we set that threshold at 50 rather than 30. There was some debate about that for triggering a major review. Could you comment on that?
Yes, I can. So from starting at the beginning of last year, or the end of last year, excuse me, the beginning of this year, to 2016, 11 sites would have still gone, or 11 sites would have been reviewed under this, 10 would have still gone. So only one would have been excluded with these changes.
Okay.
And could you comment? You are confident that that pattern will continue?
Yes, we believe that that pattern should continue. It's, you know, the former code was much less strict than the current one. So we don't expect it to change or modify with just the this small change, otherwise small change.
Great, thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Piedmont Smith.
I just wanted to clarify, that was since the beginning of 2021 or 2020?
Yeah, no, sorry, I butchered that. Since the end of 2020. This year was not counted as it was under the new code, so the changes. And there, I believe there are four that would have still been reviewed. I just didn't have that number. I only had from 2016, started 2016 to the end of 2020.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Further questions from council members? Seeing none, we'll go to the public for public comments on ordinance 21-20. We'll ask that you use the raised hand function in Zoom or send our meeting host note in chat to indicate your intent to speak on ordinance 21-20. Anything, Mr. Lucas?
Out of the public, no.
Okay, thank you. Seeing none, we'll return to council for final comments. Okay, seeing none, it's been properly moved to second. Will the clerk please call the roll? Ordinance 21-20.
Yes, let's see. Councilmember Scambolory?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Volin?
Yes.
And Rosenbarger?
Yep.
Thank you. Ordinance 21-20 was adopted nine zero. Thank you very much. Councilmember Flaherty.
President, I move that ordinance 21-21 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Second.
Thank you. It's been properly moved to second. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Sims?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Volin?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yeah.
And Scambolory?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. It's been properly moved and seconded. That ordinance 21-21 be read, I'm sorry, introduced, read by the clerk by title and synopsis only. Will the clerk please read?
Ordinance 2121 to amend Title 20 Unified Development Ordinance of the Bloomington Municipal Code Regarding Corrections Set Forth in Bloomington Municipal Code 2007. The synopsis is as follows. This petition clarifies and amends regulations in the new UDO related to definitions of the UDO. Your committee of the whole recommendation was due past nine zero zero.
Councilmember Flaherty.
I move that ordinance 21-21 be adopted.
Second.
Thank you. It's been properly moved and seconded. Mr. Robling, assume you're still on deck, yes?
Yes, thank you. This is 2121. So this petition clarifies some existing definitions and proposes some new definitions. There are seven total amendments to the Unified Development Ordinance that can be split between amended and new definitions. So the first is building or structure primary, clarifying that multiple uses can occur on a lot. The existing definition says, quote, "the primary use," however, a lot may have more than one use. Multifamily amending that so that upper floor units, which is no longer used in the code, is allowed and shall be treated like multifamily residential. My screen's not scrolling. There you go, sorry. So family syncing the ADU reference with the changes that were made in the 2019, 2020 UDO update to allow for a family to live in each unit. The definition of family was not updated to reflect the change at the time, though the ADU section was. Medical clinic, it's adding birthing center as a specific type of use in a medical clinic so that they are clearly regulated in the code and not as a hospital. Porch, we're amending the definition of to meet a standard architectural definition as an uncovered porch has presented issues for staff over the years. And finally, for the amended ones, we're amending the definition related to housing for people experiencing homelessness. That's for the supportive housing definition. The two new definitions, there's firearm sales, which adds a definition because this use was previously regulated under a different definition that is no longer in code, having it as its own defining use clarifies administration of that use. And small livestock adding a definition in order to clarify what can be permitted as small livestock. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you again, Mr. Robling. We'll move to council for any questions. Ordinance 21-21. Okay, seeing none, we'll go to public for public comment on ordinance 21-21. I'll ask that you please use the raised hand function in Zoom or send our meeting host a message on chat to indicate your intention to make a public comment. Okay, none there. Thank you, Mr. Lucas. Seeing none, we'll return to council for final comment on ordinance 21-21. Okay. Okay, I'm sorry. So Councilmember Volin moved his hand up. Okay, no, you're fine. Thank you. Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Yes, Councilmember Flaherty?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Volin?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yeah.
Scambolory?
Yes.
And Sims?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ordinance 21-21 is adopted nine zero. Councilmember Flaherty.
Mr. President, I move that ordinance 2117 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Second.
It's been properly moved to second that ordinance 21-17 be read by the clerk by title and synopsis only. Will the clerk please read?
Would you like me to call the roll first?
Oh, I'm sorry. It's going so fast. I thought we did. Of course, I would like you to call the roll first. Thank you. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Volin?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yeah.
Cambolory?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
And Flaherty?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. And that motion passes nine zero, and it is now time, if the clerk don't mind, to read this ordinance 21-17 by title and synopsis only. Will the clerk?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Ordinance 2117 to amend Title 20 Unified Development Ordinance of the Bloomington Municipal Code Regarding Corrections Set Forth in Bloomington Municipal Code 2103. The synopsis is as follows. This petition clarifies and amends regulations in the new UDO related to use regulations. Your committee of the whole recommendation is due past four zero five.
Councilmember Flaherty.
I move that ordinance 21-17 be adopted.
Second.
Thank you. It's been properly moved to second. Mr. Robling.
Thank you. This 2117, this petition deals with the amendments of details related to allowed uses. There are 30 amendments to the Unified Development Ordinance. Can be roughly divided into seven categories. Clarification, student housing, parking, livestock, accessory structures, accessory dwelling units, home occupation, and mixed-use employment. Hang on, sorry. Screen's freezing on this end. Okay, so the first will add a 15-day limit to existing temporary use special event. It'll add an existing food protection fence description to the use specific standards for urban agricultural, non-commercial, while leaving it in the landscape buffering and fences section as well. It'll clarify that the existing language for structures related to livestock or livestock waste are for large or medium livestock, as those are the only defined livestock sizes in the existing code. It will clarify that each hose typically one side is in a fuel dispenser is in one unit. There we go. As opposed to the unit being both sides of it, two hoses. It'll amend the existing regulation that storage units in the mixed-use neighborhood scale, mixed-use medium scale, and the mixed-use downtown district are required to be two-story buildings so that the second story can contain uses beside storage. It'll clarify that limits on accessory structures refer to enclosed accessory structures, as is the practice. It'll limit farm produce sales to 180 days within a calendar year as opposed to 180 consecutive days. And asterisks will be added to the student housing in the mixed-use student housing district so that the use specific standards for the use will apply in that district. In multifamily and mixed-use districts, changing student housing separation requirements so that buildings on one lot also need to be met, meet the separation requirement. Projects using the affordable housing incentive are exempt from this requirement. In multifamily and mixed-use districts, reducing building floor plate maximums by half. Projects using the affordable housing incentives may have double the floor plate maximum. In the mixed-use student housing district, setting a building floor plate maximum where, as it did not exist before, projects using affordable housing incentives will have no maximum in that district. These changes are made to adjust the size limitations to be more appropriate. In the residential high-density district, reducing maximum building height by one story, projects that need additional height may need affordable housing incentives and can be taller. This adjustment is made so that the maximum height is more appropriate for by right projects. All right, so it'll add 20-foot setback requirement for parking on ground floor inside a building facing a road or multifamily use. Parking garages along streets and sidewalks hamper the interface of the site with the public realm. And so the proposal to the limit is in the use in that area. Limit parking garage space in student housing so that 50% of the ground floor area for buildings along the street. This is also included to limit the direct interface of interactive space for public row. For livestock, add a setback requirement for structures containing small livestock that are smaller than those requirements for medium and large livestock. 35 feet from a front property line, 15 feet from side property lines, and 25 feet from the rear property line so that smaller livestock buildings may be possible on smaller urban lots. It'll also amend the table to clarify this. It lists area requirements for animals, which is not always pasture size in the proposal. And I'll add small livestock to the table, allowing two per lot if the lot meets minimum lot size for the zoning district. It'll also delete a note about small livestock because it cannot be administered as the weight of the animal is in the definition of medium livestock. The addition of small livestock to chapter seven, and this table should take care of that. And then delete a reference to the age of animal. The addition of small livestock to chapter seven in this table should take care of that use as well. In the residential multifamily, residential high-density, and the mobile home park districts, it'll add a minimum square footage to the maximum footprint of accessory structures so that developments with only one or two small buildings can also have a typical accessory structure. The regulation was previously percentage-based only, so smaller developments were extremely limited. It'll delete the 50% maximum in the residential estate zoning district as agricultural buildings are limited by this number. The provision will also be deleted if the RE district is removed later. It'll add a note to the R1 residential large lot district to exempt agricultural structures from size limitations. In mixed-use districts, it'll add a minimum square footage to the maximum footprint for accessory structures so that developments with only one or two small buildings can have typical accessory structures. This regulation was previously percentage-based only. Smaller developments were extremely limited. For accessory dwelling units, it'll remove the minimum lot requirement for ADUs. The site will be subject to all impervious surface coverages and setback requirements. It'll clarify that the gross floor area for detached ADU references so that it'll clear, it will be clear that the only portion of the structure that is used for the ADU is limited to square footage. This matches intent and practice. It'll change the siding or setbacks of detached ADUs to five feet, which was the regulation in the previous UDO. It'll remove the interested party notification requirement for ADUs as the use is by right, and we have found that the notice for by right projects creates confusion for those receiving the letter. For home occupations, it'll change the home occupation maximum from 15% of the structure use to 50% of the structure to reflect changing practices in how and where people work. Add that home occupations can occur in accessory structures that meet minimum size requirements for the zoning district and clarify that the exempted uses are excluded from size limitations. It'll add home occupations can occur, accessory structure, as long as they do not interfere with off-street parking requirements. For mixed-use employment, it'll add medium-scale retail as a permitted use. It'll increase the permitted restaurant size to 5,000 square feet. And I can answer any questions.
Thank you very much. We'll move the council for any questions on ordinance 21-17. Councilmember Scambolory?
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Robley, can you put up your last slide, please? With the committee of the whole recommendation?
I only had plant commission recommendation on there.
Ah, okay, never mind. Got it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, President Sims, and thanks, Mr. Robling, for the presentation. I would ask if you will clarify when USA in building floor plate. Will you explain that to me and to the general public? What does that mean, a building floor plate? And to people observing the building, what does that mean?
Are you there, Mr. Robling?
Yeah, sorry, I clicked the wrong button. Okay, yeah, so the building floor plate is, the floor plate is the area that the building takes up on the ground. It's only, it's regulated by the walls of the building rather than other impervious surfaces that would be regulated in different sections.
So if you're observing the building from outside, what does that mean?
So yeah.
What do we observe that's different?
So the building floor plate would just be the actual structure. So it'd be the four walls or however many walls there are that are the exterior. So it'd be the the four walls or however many walls there are that are the exterior and then the area in between that.
Okay, and that's for student housing?
Correct.
Thank you. And will you also explain the terminology when you say home occupation? And what is the practical effect of changing it from fifteen percent to fifty percent for me and for anyone listening?
Sure. So a home occupation, there's multiple uses that are are home occupations but don't require any size restrictions or anything like that. But for everything else, those would be, you know, could be a barber shop, anything like that. You know, psychiatrist office, but it's a it's an occupation that you do at home. It can allow up to one. It has to follow within certain rules. So there's our requirements. There's maximum customer of one at a time or employees. But so these are non-excluded uses that would fall under traditionally commercial uses, but that are done in the home. So they would change the fifteen percent, which is often a small percentage of the home to fifty percent to reflect the fact that most people, at least in the current time, and are moving toward this anyway that most people are working from home, or at least in part or in whole. So this would allow that more space in each home be allowed to use be used for a home occupation. It will so that only change the interior rather than the exterior. Because it'll only be limited to the interior of the primary structure in this case.
Right. So it doesn't mean there's signage outside that neon signs or anything, right?
Member Smith.
Thank you.
I was going to say you went to the third apple or third bite.
Sorry about that.
That's quite all right. Councilmember Rallo.
Mr. Robling, when you were talking, describing the interested party notification being confusing, could you elaborate?
Sure. So the the biggest confusion is that neighbors who receive it expect that there's a meeting or maybe some sort of further conversation in a public realm that will be happening. Whereas that's not the case, the use is by right, similar to other by right uses. This is the only by right use that would require a notification with no associated hearing. I'm sorry, that's it.
Couldn't the letter just explicitly say that this is a permitted use and there is no hearing?
Yeah, so the letter does actually say that currently. It does mention that the there is no hearing and it just lists out.
So I don't understand the confusion. So it explicitly says there's no hearing and people expect one?
I believe Mr. Rucker is going to.
Thank you, Councilmember Rallo. Michael Rucker, City Attorney for the City of Bloomington. I staff the the Planning Department. I think, you know, when we talk about legal notices that are mandated by city code or state law, they really serve very specific purposes. A legal notice is intended to tell the recipient that they have certain substantive legal rights and that there's a certain procedure that they can follow to exercise those rights. So in the context of a conditional use approval, the legal notice serves the purpose of saying, look, you have the right to go and testify in front of the Board of Zoning Appeals in this circumstance, and the Board of Zoning Appeals is going to hold a hearing, so show up at this date and time to testify on this particular conditional use approval. But where where it uses by right, the legal notice is just confusing and it's expensive and it's inconvenient, and it leads to misunderstandings where people get frustrated and they think that they have legal rights when they don't, despite what's stated in the letter. You know, it's it's not a tool that mandates dialogue between people. It's a tool that creates confusion between people. So it's very uncommon to have a legal notice required in the circumstance where there are no underlying rights, if that makes sense.
Well, first of all, I think that it doesn't, it shouldn't mandate anything. It should invite conversation. So if if the letter mandates anything, does it explicitly say that it mandates? That people have to dialogue?
No, and I I think that's probably the point that I'm trying to make is that I think proponents of a legal notice in a situation where there are are no underlying substantive legal rights, which is just a very strange thing in the first place. They've suggested that it can promote dialogue. The number of circumstances where we would want to encourage dialogue between neighbors really are innumerable. We could sit here all night and come up with circumstances where it would be wise for one neighbor to mention to his or her other neighbor that they're going to be taking a particular action. But we aren't in the business of saying, when you're going to do that, please send a legal notice to all all of these people by mail. That's just just not something we do where there aren't any underlying substantive legal rights at issue.
Why was the administration supportive of it last time?
Councilmember, I'm sorry, before we go further, I think that was two.
Yeah, I'm just trying. I'm trying to get to the nature of why it's problematic.
We'll come back on the third bite, if you don't mind.
Well, it's the same question. Thank you.
Councilmember Piedmont Smith.
Well, I was just going to move amendment one. So if there are other questions on the presentation, I can wait.
Remember, Smith, do you have any more questions? Councilmember Rallo.
Well, I just, we we've had this policy and and the administration supported it when when we adopted it. Why did you support it then?
You know, I I can't address that with anything better than to say we are constantly trying to learn from policies that we enact and improve. And we don't see any purpose to this notice, and we have experienced the fact that it does create confusion and frustration among those recipients of the notice who only discover that they, you know, they don't really have any way to oppose an A D U that's been that's that's by right. So.
Have you noticed that only creates that? Or has there been good outcomes from it? Do you have a way of knowing?
Yeah, I would have to ask planning staff if they have any knowledge to that. I don't have any specific knowledge as to whether or not there have been positive outcomes.
How many how many negative outcomes have there been?
Well, I wouldn't. This is their rule like the city planning department. So the notification requirement is just something that's been carried on from the conditional use process. So when we updated the zoning code and we made accessory dwelling units of permitted use rather than a conditional use, you know, we kept in the notification requirements. You know, for a lot of the reasons that you kind of mentioned there that it, you know, gave notification to people, might help spur some dialogue. We've only had, I think, two or three A D U's that have come in, and the notification letters have gone out. You know, we've received a couple of calls from people about those. And they said, hey, when's the hearing? And we're like, hey, there is no hearing. You know, this is to let you know that that yours and A D U going in, and the responses have been, well, why? Why am I getting this letter? And we've explained that it's just because it's still a requirement. So as we've gone to try to make accessory dwelling units easier to occur, to promote them, to incentivize them, this notification hasn't really resulted in any positive. You know, we can't say it's there's been any negatives because, you know, there hasn't been any interactions, no meetings that have transpired that we've been at. They just mail up notices, they wait to ten days, and then we issue the permit. So it's really just become a kind of a stumbling block or waiting block that slows things down that doesn't really seem to have a purpose anymore at this point. And so, you know, as Mr. Rucker has tried to say, you know, we've just been trying to streamline this to make it easier for folks and to increase the amount of housing.
So but could I just ask one more question? Would you be aware of any good outcomes? It you would be aware of the of confusion because people would contact the office for clarification. But for those who understand it, you wouldn't be aware of that.
Unless, you know, we got a revision to the building plans that were submitted, we would have no idea whether anything changed on the the plans or whether or not there were any interactions. You know, we no longer, you know, because there's not a hearing, you know, we're not listing contact information for the prospective person. So it's just a notification that a A D U's been applied for for a specific address and that a permit will be issued in ten days. So no, we really don't know if anything's transpired other than we get calls from people that receive the letter thinking there's going to be a hearing of some sort, and, you know, we tell them that there's not.
Very good. Thank you so much for all of you for responding.
Thank you. Seeing no more council questions, Councilmember Piedmont Smith.
Yes, I move amendment one to ordinance twenty-one seventeen.
Second.
Thank you. Amendment one has been properly moved in second.
Would you like me to describe it?
I would care for you to present that. Yes, ma'am, I would. Thank you.
All right, so this is about the section on student housing. And the the ordinance as written makes some changes in both location and building floor plate. And says in both of those cases that if the affordable housing incentive is used, then the requirements are 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 less or are more liberal. So this amendment just seeks to add the sustainable development incentives in addition to the affordable housing incentives as situations where if those incentives are used, then the sep- both the separation requirement and the maximum building floor plate requirement are reduced, I mean, are I'm sorry, are less stringent, let me say that way, so that if either of those incentives are used, the separation can be less and the building floor plate can be greater. So it's just adding the sustainable development incentives to the affordable housing incentives as exceptions to those rules.
Thank you, Councilmember Piedmont Smith. You have any question from fellow council members? Okay, seeing none, we'll go to the staff at this point.
Thank you, Councilmember Sims. This is Scott Robinson, Director of Planning and Transportation. I want to thank Councilmember Piedmont Smith for bringing this to our attention. That was not our intent when drafting this change to the U D O. We did want to include both the affordable housing incentive as well as the sustainability incentive. So again, we support this amendment. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Having heard from council comments and and staff, we'll now go to the public if we have any questions on amendment one for ordinance twenty-seven. You can please use the raised hand function in Zoom or send a meeting also notice by chat for any public comment on amendment one of ordinance twenty-one dash seventeen. Do we have any takers, Mr. Lucas?
No, not that I see.
Okay, thank you. We'll return back to council for any final comments on amendment one. Okay, seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll on amendment one?
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Danberg?
Yes.
Yes.
Volin?
Yes.
Russenberger?
Yes.
Scambler?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Clarity?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. The vote is nine zero for amendment one. Now we'll return back to the council if we have any questions on ordinance twenty-one dash seven or on dash one seven as amended.
Mr. President, I would like to move amendment two.
Second.
Second.
Thank you. Amendment two has been properly moved in second. Do you care to present, Mr. Rallo?
Yes, well, this has been part of the discussion that we just entertained a bit. It retains the current policy of interested party notification. And the process of noticing consists of the petitioner shall be responsible for mailing notice to all persons owning land within three hundred linear feet of any property line with a parcel for which an A D U is being requested. Mail notices shall be postmarked and sent via first-class mail at least ten days prior to final action by the director. A notarized affidavit shall be submitted stating compliance with this section before any permits are issued. Mail notice shall include the physical address, zoning designation, and primary use of the subject property. A brief a brief narrative summarizing the request and demonstrating compliance with this section twenty point zero three point zero three zero G five. The location and hours where the copy of the petition is on file for examination and any other information relevant to the petition required by the director. So it retains what the current policy. And the purpose, it seems to me, is just simply a courtesy meant to increase the likelihood of of a better outcome. I realize that it might lead to confusion, but I think that depends on the nature of the of the notice. Of course, some people might misinterpret it in any case, I guess. But it seems to me notification increases the likelihood of a good outcome from the onset. And recognizing too that, of course, this is a permitted use, but it is still a relatively recent allowance that we've created. So so that's it.
Thank you. Do we have any questions from fellow council members? Councilmember Scambler.
Yes, thank you. And I this may be directed to the Planning Department order, Councilmember Rallo. Letter H Roman numeral three point four, any other information relevant to the petition required by the director, what could that include theoretically?
So, you know, usually that would just be things like the site plan, elevations. You know, without getting into obviously personal details of, you know, who would be living there or what the purpose of the A D U is. You know, that's the general notification information that we would send along. You know, maybe a simple petitioner statement. Again, with being very cautious of including any personal information of, you know, what the intent is. You know, it would just be the basic information that was submitted with the building permit.
Okay, thank you very much. May I ask a second question, Mr. President? And so if Councilmember Rallo, if I'm reading this correctly, the petitioner is responsible for the notice. And that means that they are responsible for drafting the notice and mailing it and all that, correct?
Well, apparently, although I think that, you know, go ahead.
And I guess my ultimate question is, does it simply go from the petitioner to the recipients, or is there someone in between who looks at it and says, okay, yeah, this does include everything?
Well.
I could I could answer that just a little bit. So we do have a pre-made form that folks use for the A D U. It's very similar to the public notification forms that we use for other petitions. But we've obviously edited to remove any mention of a hearing date. So we prepare the form with the basic information and then, you know, maybe include a site plan or elevations that get mailed along.
Okay. And in this case, the petition, but the petitioner would be well responsible for mailing it, right?
Correct. They mail the form and then give us an affidavit stating that they've mailed it.
Got it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further question from council members? Councilmember Rallo, you got a question for yourself?
I do. I have a question for Mr. Gurlik, actually. So regarding the letter, I'm trying to kind of drill down and find out why there's this confusion. And does it explicitly state this is a permitted use? There there is no hearing? Is this simply an invitation to dialogue with your neighbor if you're interested?
Well, so the notification basically just says that we've received a building permit for an accessory dwelling unit. You know, here are the plans. There are ten days before the director has to act on the petition. And that's pretty much the extent of the letter.
Okay, well, that's probably why there's confusion.
Thank you. Do we have any? Councilmember Smith?
I'm just going to follow up on Mr. Rallo's question comment there is. Mr. Gurlik, we, you could just, you could adapt the letter, right? If you if to try to help allay any confusion, yes?
Yes, certainly, we can modify the letter. You know, part of our concern is not just that it's causing confusion, but it's causing an undue burden and slowing down the review of a by right permit. So, you know, it's it's a twofold of what we're trying to accomplish with removing this notification. It's not just, you know, to remove confusion, but. but to make the process simpler and easier for folks. You know, there are certainly lots of permits that we see. And, you know, we get calls from people about fences. You know, why wasn't I notified that my neighbor was putting up a fence? Why wasn't I notified that they're building a house? Why wasn't I notified that they're doing a shed? You know, these are all by right petitions. You know, and as Mr. Rucker said, you know, certainly we could require a notification for any number of things, but, you know, there's not a legal right behind this that is being accomplished.
Mr. Robinson, would you like to respond further on that?
Thank you, Mr. Sims. I just wanted to point out a clarification on what Mr. Gurlik said regarding staff's ability to modify the notification. I just want to make clear that staff does follow the letter of the law with the U D O. And we do have limitations on our interpretation and free range and what we have to do on these instances. So, yes, there are some limitations on what's in the letter. But again, the legal notice does raise issues and concerns.
Sure, sure. And I understand that.
Mr. Rucker, do you have, were you intending to respond to Councilmember Smith's question as well?
And just very quickly, you know, I think part of the confusion is that it's so unusual, I would bordering on bizarre, to require a legal notice to a person who has no legal rights, that when that letter comes, I think it's very surprising to people. When you receive a letter formally stating that there's a petition, you expect that you have some sort of say or voice or that there's a hearing where you can be heard. And when you discover that there isn't, that's just very unusual. As, as I believe Mr. Robling pointed out, or maybe it was Eric, with this, we don't have this requirement for any other by right situation. It just doesn't exist except in A D Us. And to some degree, it's just vestigial from when, you know, A D Us were conditional.
Thank you. Are you okay with that, Councilmember Smith? Thank you. Councilmember Sandberg?
No, I don't have a question now. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Volin?
I don't have a question anymore either. Thank you.
Okay, do we have any further questions from councilmembers? Okay, seeing none, we'll go to the public. This is for questions for Amendment Two of Ordinance Twenty One Dash Seventeen. Please indicate your intention to speak publicly by using a raised hand function in Zoom or you can send our meeting host a note on chat function. Public comment. Amendment Number Two, Mr. Lucas?
Yes, first up is Kathy Crabtree, who should be able to unmute.
Hi, I'm Kathy Crabtree. I live in the near west side. And I will say it is confusing to get a notice such as this. It happened when my neighbors built an A D U. There was no reason for me to have to get a letter. I can see they built an A D U. I think this amendment is ridiculous. It causes undue burden on both the homeowner and on city staff. So I strongly encourage city council to oppose it. It's way overreached by government. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Lucas?
Yes, we also have a comment via chat from Dave Askins with B Square Beacon. The comment reads, I'm hoping to get confirmation that the yet-to-be-implemented intergov citizen self-service two and the intergov mailing lists tool could be used by someone to sign up for electronic notifications about building permits and petitions for A D Us as well as a lot of other things near them. And that is the end of the comment. And I don't see any additional comments at the moment.
Thank you for the clarification on staff's position from Mr. Robinson.
Thank you, Mr. Sims. Scott Robinson, Director of Planning and Transportation. I just would like to say that this was debated thoroughly at the Plan Commission. They did their job and considered the trade-offs. It did pass out of their nine zero with staff's recommendation. We're having a very similar dialogue tonight. Staff does not support this. This is remnant language left over from when A D Us were conditional. And some of the languages in there is a little bit confusing as already noted by Mr. Rucker and Mr. Gurlik. I'd also like to point out the community development software that we're working on to Unveo later this year. There is a citizen portal where somebody could log into the site and get just general basic information to what's going on around them and an address. So if they saw a building permit in the window, they could either call staff and find out or use this citizen portal to find out where they can find some general information such as site plan and that sort of stuff. We haven't unveiled that or rolled that out. We're still working on that. The second part of the question about notification, that's a tool staff will have to use that we do now when we notify again for petitions and cases that require legal notification for a public hearing. That's a process where we get those property addresses and send that out. So there's not a way for a citizen to kind of log into the system to be notified anytime anything happens in their neighborhood. That would have to fall under their own interest to query addresses and what have you. But there is going to be greater ability for residents of the community to gain additional information through this new software that we hope to have ready by the end of the year. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now return to council for any final comments on Amendment Two of Ordinance Twenty One Dash Seven. Councilmember Rallo?
Well, just responding to Mr. Robinson, I understand if I were staff, I'd want to streamline things to. I think the confusion might arise from the nature of the letter. I think that that could be clarified and would probably result in less confusion. I suspect that there'll still be inquiries if construction occurs. And regarding computer access, I mean, we still have populations that probably aren't computer savvy and would still benefit from getting a mailing, thinking of elderly population or low-income people. So, you know, I don't want to predicate all notice to be, you know, online or all information to be when having to find it online because I think it discriminates. So I think this is just a courtesy that I think could be useful because it notifies people from the onset and, you know, could allay people's concerns early on and it could lead to better outcomes. So that's why I decided to sponsor it. Thank you.
Thank you. Going to Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yeah, I, I just, I'm entirely opposed to this amendment. It makes no sense to require notification for something that is by right. Since when do we legislate courtesy? Since when then, since when do we legislate? It's a good idea to let your neighbor know about something. I mean, are we next going to say, oh, you have to send your neighbor a note if you're cutting down a tree in your garden? I mean, what, we, we don't, there's no point in this in this notification, in this official notification. If you want to be a good neighbor, and I hope everybody does, you knock on your neighbor's door and you say, hey, I'm building an A D U. But for us to require that, to legislate that, it just makes no sense. I mean, the confusion over the letter is not the point. The point is that an A D U is the by right construction that people can do. And so what's the point? I mean, even if somebody is building a garage or building a new single-family home next door, there's no notification. So it just makes no sense to me whatsoever.
Thank you. Any further comments from council? Council, Councilperson Scambolary?
Thank you. I really appreciate the intention behind this amendment. And I think we do tend to get better outcomes and we tend to anticipate and head off problems when people can talk about projects before they ever happen. So I think we do get better outcomes when neighbors talk to each other and cooperate. I just don't think we can legislate that. As I read this, even as written, it doesn't ensure good communication. I think the way to have to do that is to then craft another amendment that would require the petitioner to respond if a neighbor reaches out. And then that's kind of going off the rails, I think. I really do appreciate the intention behind this. But with a by right project and the inability to, I think, guarantee, you know, good conversations among neighbors, this amendment just won't have my support this evening. So I just wanted to explain my thinking on that. Thank you.
Thank you. You have any further comments from council? Okay, seeing none, I'll make a final comment. I have agreed with much of what I've heard this evening and thank Councilmember Rallo for bringing this. The term courtesy was mentioned and I see that. But on the flip side of that, one person's courtesy is another person's undue burden. And that's really, really tough to legislate. Many times we talk about fiscal impact on certain things. I think that also in this particular case includes time. I think it includes effort. I think it, to a certain extent, even gets into privacy issues. I also think if it's permitted and it has began to, there's construction, then it obviously has been approved and there is a building permit. And I think that that would generate conversation from the neighbors if in fact they are hemical enough for having that. So I understand the intent. I just don't see the need. And the last thing that I'll say is, I think it's kind of weird too that we would, again, I understand the intent, I think, but it's weird to have or require notice on one thing that's permitted, but none of the others. And that's, to me, what gets to be confusing sometimes and leads to certain outcomes. But at any rate, do we have any other final comments from council? Okay, see, Councilmember Rallo?
Well, just to say, I appreciate everyone's dialogue and discussion about this. I thought it was worthy to at least debate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, seeing no more comments from council. Will the clerk please call a roll on Amendment Two of Ordinance Twenty One Dash One Seven?
Yes, Councilmember Sandberg?
No.
Rallo?
Yes.
Volin?
No.
Rosenbarger?
No.
Scambolary?
No.
Sims?
No.
Flaherty?
No.
Piedmont Smith?
No.
And Smith?
No.
Okay.
Thank you. Amendment Two fails one eight. Before we go any further, do we have any further amendments? Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
I move Amendment Three to Ordinance Twenty One Oh Seven.
Okay, thank you. Amendment Three of the Ordinance Twenty One Dash Seventeen. I think that's what I heard.
That's what I meant to say if I didn't.
No, 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 that's okay. I just want to make sure we're correct on that. It probably moved to second. Would you care to present, Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes, this again is about student housing and this time it's about parking in a building that is designated student housing. There was an amendment.
You're muted. You're muted.
Oh, my goodness. I'm sorry.
You have to repeat the last, yeah.
Yeah, sorry about that.
That's okay.
So this amendment is about ground floor parking in a student housing building. The Ordinance Twenty One Seventeen includes revision brought forward by the staff that says no more than fifty percent of the ground floor of a building adjacent to a public street can be used for parking. And I know there was some talk about this at the Plan Commission level as well and some concern that parking, especially if it's multi-level parking, may not be feasible if only fifty percent of the ground floor can be for parking. And of course, as a city, we've always preferred structured parking to surface parking. So I didn't want to make it too difficult to have structured parking for student housing. So this amendment deletes that revision and instead incorporates a revision that is also applied to multifamily, which says all portions within the ground floor of a structure used for vehicular parking shall be located at least twenty feet behind the building facade facing a public street. If there are multiple primary buildings on the site, this requirement only applies to the building closest to the public street. So it's using that same language and applying it to student housing.
Thank you very much. Do we have any questions of Councilmember Piedmont Smith from our fellow colleagues? Councilmember Volin?
Could we hear staff's opinion of it?
I will get to that. I was asking for questions. But yeah, you're absolutely right. Can staff give us their position on that?
Here I am, I'm so sorry. Development Services Manager Jackie Scanlon. Yes, we are fine with that change. We think that makes sense and meets the intent of what we were wanting to do with the fifty percent. And it's a little cleaner and we're fine with it. Thanks.
Thank you. Do we have any other questions from council? Okay, seeing none, we'll go to the public for comments on Amendment Three for Ordinance Twenty One Dash One Seven. Please indicate your intent to speak publicly by raising, using the raised hand function in Zoom or you can send the meeting host a message on chat. Do we have any takers? Mr. Lucas?
Not that I see, no.
Okay, thank you. Seeing none, we'll go back to council for final comment. Okay, seeing none. Before we go to the clerk, I do just kind of want to make a point. And parliamentarian can correct me if I'm wrong on this. For amendments, it says the amendment is then read or explained by the one making the motion and then council members may then ask questions about the amendment. At that point, the staff or petitioner, if any, and the public are invited to comment. So I just wanted to make that clear. That's what I was trying to do before going to the staff, just trying to follow the script. No harm, no foul, but I just wanted to make that clear. Okay, any further comments on final comments? Seeing none. Will the clerk please call the roll on Amendment Three for Ordinance Twenty One Dash One Seven?
Mm-hmm. Rallo?
He's trying.
Yes.
Okay.
Volin?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yeah.
Scambolary?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
And Sandberg?
Yes.
Thank you. Amendment Three passes nine zero. Councilmember Volin, do you have Amendment Four? Has it yet been distributed?
I'm, before I introduce it, I wanted to ask a question of staff, if that's okay? Because it's relevant to the amendment. And it may dictate whether I introduce the amendment or not.
I think it's probable. Mr. Parliamentarian?
Yeah, I was just going to say, I think that would be in order in just in the course of council member questions on Ordinance Twenty One Seventeen as a whole, if the chair would allow that.
Okay, indifferent from amendment, possible amendment four? Yes, okay, thank you. Go ahead, Councilmember Volin.
Thank you. Ms. Scanlon, I want to call your attention to the table that you and I have been discussing, Table Oh Three Four. And I've just clicked it off my screen and trying to find it here. So can you display that table? So can you display that table by chance on the screen?
Sure. Just a second. Can you see it?
Yes, yes, thank you. So my interest is in the definition of the column maximum footprint. So so under the various Rs, you know, there's a limitation on the maximum footprint of accessory structures. So that's not the same thing as an ADU. I mean, what is a practical upshot of, well, I mean, like, I know that ADUs are, can be made to eight hundred and forty square feet in R2. But and the denser zones, what does that, what does five eighty or four hundred mean explicitly, you know, practically speaking?
So that is the maximum accessory structure size in those other districts, all the districts listed here. And for an ADU, what that means is because of the reference in the ADU, you specific standards, the area for an ADU in a particular district cannot be larger than the square footage listed here. So in the R4 district, for example, the actual square footage of your ADU portion can't be greater than four hundred square feet. So for example, in the R3, if you had a garage that was on your first floor, and then it had an attic, and you wanted to convert that attic to ADU, you can convert the attic, and then with the amendments we've proposed tonight, the only square footage that counts against you toward the ADU is that square footage that's actually used for the ADU on the second floor. And then obviously, the numbers are different per, depending on which district you're in.
I guess I'm still confused. In other words, you're saying that if you had a garage, it was twenty by twenty, and you built a unit above it, that would be a four hundred square foot unit.
Correct.
The garage wouldn't count towards its footprint.
It counts towards the footprint here, but it doesn't count toward the maximum square footage for your ADU. So the ADU language that we're proposing, we think that it already says this, but we're trying to clarify with what we've, the change that we proposed, that the actual space that you're using to live in, the living space for your ADU is, has the maximum square footage, so that it's not gross floor area of the entire building. Because if you have two stories, obviously, at a four hundred square foot footprint, that's eight hundred square feet.
Right.
So we're clarifying that you can have four hundred square feet, whether it's a one-story four hundred square foot or two-story gross floor area, eight hundred square foot, where only the second floor is an ADU, that either of those things could be allowed.
So in other words, what you're saying is that in R4, the four hundred square foot footprint does not necessarily limit the size of an ADU to four hundred square feet. It could be bigger, as long as the footprint itself is four hundred square feet.
No, the ADU portion has to be four hundred square feet, but you could have, you could have a garage level use on the ground floor that's four hundred square feet and an AD, an ADU square footage use on the second floor. The way that it's written now, without our change, makes it seem like the gross square, the gross floor square footage is four hundred, meaning that you couldn't convert your second floor if you wanted to to an ADU.
If you have a four hundred square foot, two-story garage in R4, you could, you could not convert it.
The way the language is written now, hold on, I'm trying to pull up this amendment. Which I think.
It looks like there's a big green ADU on the shelf behind you, actually. A treehouse.
Anyone else can jump in if I've described that weirdly. But I think what you're getting at is the, you know, we received a question here. Let me share this screen.
Well, while you're doing that, I mean, my point is that I'm questioning whether or not a four hundred square foot ADU is something that will incentivize its construction in R4.
Right. So, yeah, so this is the language we've proposed in the detached ADU section. Because we think that existing language, which only discusses maximum gross floor area of any detached ADU shall be eight hundred and forty square feet, or the maximum square footage allowed for accessory structures, whichever is less, that that isn't clear enough to indicate that your garage portion or your shed portion that's attached, that those things don't count against you. You're, what you're getting at is that you're wondering if for, should, I think, so correct me if I'm wrong, that eight hundred and forty square feet should be maybe across the board or considered in more districts, or that four hundred might be too small?
The, it's the latter. Amendment four would allow the same size as R3. So in other words, it would increase the size of an ADU to what's available in R3, five hundred and eighty square feet, not eight forty.
Oh, got it. Sure. So, yes, we would we would not suggest doing that, because, for example, if you, if you got a permit to build an ADU, brand-new ADU in your yard in the R4, and you built it to five hundred and eighty square feet, something happens, you decide you don't, you no longer want it to be an ADU. Now it's just become an accessory, it's become, it's always been an accessory structure under the accessory structure umbrella, which has a maximum square footage of four hundred. But now it's also not an ADU, and you have an extra one hundred and eighty square feet than your neighbor could have gotten if he would have just requested shed. So the ADUs live under the larger umbrella of accessory structures, and so that's why those maximums were included in the twenty twenty nineteen proposal. And actually, I believe, if someone can correct me if I'm wrong, that the initial proposal that went to Plan Commission in nineteen had a straight across-the-board maximum of something like four hundred and forty square feet for all of the districts.
I recall that.
And so then we changed them all to, we thought that logically it made sense to change them all so that their maximum would be equal to that of the accessory structure for the district. R4 is the one where it was slightly lower. It is possible, of course, to live in four hundred square feet. Is that ideal for everyone? No, probably not. We are trying to, with the maximum accessory structure size in general, you know, trying to make those buildings compatible in size as accessory structures to likely structures on the lot. I understand what you're saying about R3. I do think that puts us in a tough, a pretty tough situation, and a property owner in a tough situation if they were to stop using it as an ADU. Right now, if you want to stop using something as an ADU, for example, if you sell the property and the new owner does not want to have that, you have to remove the kitchen. And that, that's the, really, the only physical change that you have to do. Where in the case, if we let you build an ADU that was larger than the accessory structure maximum, I'm not sure what we would do. Have you, make you tear it down? I'm not sure how we would be able to address that fairly.
Okay, I'm still confused. I don't quite. This, none of this is very clear. My worry has been that, and the point of Amendment four was to increase R4 to the same standard as R3. I'm not going to introduce the amendment now, but I'm still trying to understand what's going on, and maybe it's moot. But I did agree with the member of the public who wrote, saying that four hundred square feet does not seem like it would be enough incentive to get built, you know, in R4. So I guess that would be my last question to you is, you know, what is your take on that idea? Do you think, I mean, do you have any cases of ADUs that are built that small?
Oh, that's a good question. I'm not sure. We'd have to have time to look into that. I think we definitely have existing accessory structures now, obviously, that are that small that could be converted.
Well, we've done with ADUs as opposed to.
Well, but if you have an existing accessory structure that you're converting to an ADU, we do have obviously smaller ones in the historic neighborhoods. I think we do have at least one example of a smaller ADU. I'm not sure, but we, we would have to look that up, because we do have conversions that go. We have had some ADUs. Oh, thank you.
You know, certainly, you know, there were lots of detached ADUs, because that four hundred and forty square foot was the maximum size that was allowed for a while under the two thousand fifteen to two thousand twenty code until we updated. So that was the maximum size that was allowed for a detached. You know, there weren't a lot of those that got built, but that they did happen, and there were some that did get, did get built. You know, there were a lot of garages above garages that got built. So, yes, it is certainly possible, and they were built that size.
Okay, so you see my concern here, that maybe it's too small to be, to incentivize ADUs in R4?
It's possible, yes. But I do think good Eric's point is that, you know, above a garage is going to be roughly that size. And we have seen some of those, and that is where we likely derived that number from initially, the four forty. And
Now it's even smaller.
Very close to that. Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. President, for the extended question.
Quite welcome. I think was a worthy debate. I take it that you're not introducing Amendment four?
You know, I'm, I'm, I think it's a good idea, but I think we're running short on time, and I'm a little reluctant to extend this debate. I do think that we need some more information from planning, and it could be clearer what their objective is here. But no, I'm going to withdraw. Thank you.
Thank you. We will now go to council for any questions on ordinance twenty-one dash seventeen as amended. Seeing none, will now go to the public for any public comments. On ordinance twenty-one dash seventeen as amended, please indicate your intent to publicly speak by using the raised hand function on Zoom, or send our meeting host a note on chat. Seeing none, will return to council for final comments, if any. Seeing none. And I'll ask the clerk to please call the role on ordinance twenty-one dash seventeen as amended.
Okay, Councilmember Volan?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yeah.
Scambolary?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ordinance twenty-one dash seventeen as amended, it's adopted nine zero. Councilmember Flaherty?
Mr. President, I move that ordinance twenty-one dash eighteen be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved in second, that ordinance twenty-one dash eighteen be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only. Will the clerk please call the role?
Yes, Councilmember Rosenbarger?
Yeah.
Scambolary?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
And Volan?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. That motion passed nine zero. Will the clerk please read?
Yes, ordinance twenty-eighteen to amend Title twenty, the Unified Development Ordinance of the Bloomington Municipal Code regarding corrections set forth in Bloomington Municipal Code twenty oh four. The synopsis is as follows. This petition clarifies and amends regulations in the new UDO related to development standards and incentives. Your committee of the whole recommendations due pass eight one zero.
Councilmember Flaherty?
Move that ordinance twenty-one dash eighteen be adopted?
Second.
Thank you. Or just twenty-one dash eighteen has been moved and properly seconded to be adopted. Ms. Scanlon, I assume you have the baton now?
I do. I'm gonna give Mr. Robling a break here and do one of these for you all. We are looking at twenty-one dash eighteen, Chapter four. This is development standards and incentives. We have twenty-one proposed amendments in this chapter. And as you'll recall, they're broken into six categories, which I'll briefly discuss here. Let's see. The first is ten that are clarifications, and these are very much some literally just adding some text in, and then clarifying some existing standards to meet existing intent and practice. So some of that includes changing, for example, the encroachment allowed by porches, now that we've changed the definition to meet an architectural definition, clarifying no disturbance in cars conservancy easements to match other environmental standard sections. Clarifying some of our flood hazard reduction requirements that they apply to all lots, all lots, not just platted lots. Addressing alley access for development in R4 in a similar way as it's addressed in R3. And also, again, addressing single-family use parking standards in our multifamily districts as though they were single, acknowledging that they're single-family use, not multifamily. And then doing some more clarifications of existing standards, such as allowing gravel that's edged to be used as driveways for single-family. That didn't quite make it through as clear as we wanted to in the code update. And then duplicating standards for our neighborhood transitions in more than one location in the code, so they're easy to find. And then making R4 available for affordable housing incentives in the same way that R1 through R3 is available for those incentives with the reduced setbacks or lot sizes in new development. And then we have four that are, again, just syncing the language in the code with the terminology from the new, new, after the update transportation plan, and that is changing from local road to neighborhood road. Four related to parking, one is an increase in the medical clinic parking maximum from three point three, which is a standard that we have to five. Again, I will briefly say that medical clinic is a use we've seen numerous times request variances and be able to show that because of the way they operate with overlapping appointments, and then having overlapping patients plus staff, that is a use we've seen regularly be able to demonstrate that they need more parking than many of our other uses. So we are proposing to increase that to five. Again, more clarification on how properties need to access their parking if they have alley access, and if they're having driveways into their property off of an alley, how that that needs to be set back at least fifteen feet from the road, and including a motorcycle parking standard. We are also hoping to codify what we have seen play out on a number of properties where the drive-through lane for a drive-through use can be even with the front building wall as opposed to twenty feet setback to make those more functional. We've found that that those types of developments can still be made pedestrian-friendly, because the front building is still set forward, close to the road, and with a proper landscape buffering can work quite well. We have added architectural standards to the student housing district, requesting that metal be allowed as a secondary finish material. So again, twenty percent or less on a facade in our mixed-use districts, and adding anti-monotony standards in those districts as well. And then three landscaping changes, two that are kind of one that's a cleanup that just didn't make it over quite the way we had hoped from the previous code, that mulch and decorative stone can only be placed around. That mulch and decorative stone can only be placed around plantings. Basically, you can't use those in lieu of grass on your property and which has been in place for some time in Bloomington. Um, and then, uh, the slightly more complicated ones. One is that, um, sometimes we require pedestrian access easements on parcels. When there isn't enough room for sidewalk in the right of way, uh, when new development is going in. Uh, and so we are asking that when that is the case, that those areas that are a part of that sidewalk do not count against the impervious. Impervious surface maximum for the development. And then again, removing the evergreen shove requirement because we have been advised. Uh, by, uh, by staff and them and the senior environmental planner also working with landscapers and developers in town. Um, that, uh, because we now require native landscaping, you can't meet the evergreen shove requirement that we carried over from the old code. So we're asking to remove that. And then just two cleanups for signage. Um, clarifying that all second story uses should be treated the same. And that multi-tenant centers can either be wall or projecting signs. And plan commission also recommended approval nine zero. And I believe, uh, Committee of the Whole is eight zero one. I can answer any questions.
Thank you. Unless I'm mistaken, I think the whole was eight one zero.
Oh, shoot, sorry.
That's quite all right. That's quite all right. Thank you for that presentation, Ms. Scanlon. Uh, we'll now go to counsel for questions. Okay, seeing none, we'll go council member Volin.
I'd like to move amendment one to 2118. Second.
Okay. It's been moved in second. Amendment one for ordinance 2118. Please present, sir.
Thank you. Well, uh, uh, I, I'm very much in favor of most of ordinance 2118. Uh, but this one particular change stood out as something that I thought went against the, at least the spirit, if not the letter of the comprehensive plan. Uh, I hear what Ms. Scanlon says about medical clinics regularly asking for variances for more parking per thousand square feet. But, um, 3.3 spaces per thousand square feet, uh, is already a high standard for parking. You know, 25 years ago, Donald Schup found that in most cities, the average was closer to, to two, to 2.5. Uh, per thousand square feet. I definitely think that in this day and age that that number is high. But to increase from 3.3 like other clinics have to 5.0 is really. Going against the spirit of the climate action plan that we heard presented tonight. And if you look at the, um, uh, goal 4.6 in the comprehensive plan, optimize parking. You know, there's nothing here that really endures endorses or encourages. Uh, more parking per square foot, which is only going to be used during business hours. It's going to increase impermeable surface. Um, I think that it's at the very least, uh, medical clinics should have to get a variance for. If they can't find a way to make more than 3.3 spaces per thousand square feet work. So, uh, this amendment simply restores that standard instead of allowing it to increase to 5.0. I'm happy to answer any questions. And I would like staff's opinion of it, although I, I, I think because they're proposing it, I assume that they oppose the amendment.
Thank you. Do we have any? Uh, council member Rallo questions to, um, uh, the amendment author?
Yes, I guess this is the staff, uh, you know, how, how many? Potential parking spaces is this going to affect? What would it potentially affect? I mean. Medical clinics are not, I mean, they're not uncommon, but. Do you have an idea?
Um, I don't, I'm not sure. Eric, you could maybe chime in about how many you think we've done in the last few years. Um, I would say, uh, yeah, that we're, we're not trying projecting out how many sites it would affect. If we just some try to keep track of the variances that we get. And if there are trends, then try to see if there's a way to address that. Uh, that maybe code is mismatched with the reality of the those types of developments. If we think that those can still be done appropriately. And so that, that's why we, uh, we are proposing that this actually be codified, uh, to, to allow that change.
I guess what I'm getting at is, so we have, you know, some competing. Competing needs. One is councilman Volin said that, you know, he's noting correctly that, you know, we, we, we did approve the climate action plan this evening. So we, we should. Pay attention to this, but then again. You feel as though it's important to increase and maybe, maybe address that.
That what, what?
Yeah, I, I think we. We're always trying, we're always addressing competing needs. I mean, especially with amendments that, uh, become controversial or that have, you know, more than one site. That's definitely something that, uh, you, you all will have to weigh. I think, uh, what we've seen, what we've asked people to do in the last, at least I would say, five years. When they're requesting more parking, we always ask, uh, you know, if they have an existing location. Uh, we ask for, uh, basically parking survey of, you know, how many cars they have there per hour for a week or so of time minimum. Uh, and, and we have seen that this particular use. Is able to show that they, that they do need more parking. So in some cases, it's, it's a non-issue because they might be in a strip mall where they have shared parking. Or they may be in a location that has street parking. But a lot of our existing development and redevelopment areas, for example, like West Third or College Mall, don't have those opportunities. Um, they don't, they don't have shared parking, uh, and they don't have street parking. Um, so, uh, we felt that this was a way to, uh, address an issue that we've seen pop up repeatedly over time. Um, but yes, you definitely, obviously, we, we are almost never advocating for more parking. Uh, I think is to, uh, to your point, uh, uh, councilperson Rallo, so it is very. Very odd and that's why we, um. We do.
We do.
But, uh, we understand that obviously. You may not agree that that need is more important. And as, um, uh, uh, councilperson Volin has said, you know, they could make a particular request, variance request every time. Uh, as well as there is some language in the code that allows for us to. Uh, to, uh. Uh, increase those maximums. Um, if a use can be shown to be quite unique, we were just hoping to codify it so that it would be clear. Moving forward.
You know, and also just point out, you know, that, that these uses are still held to the same minimum landscaped area, maximum impervious surface coverage. You know, as every other commercial site, so it's not like they're getting to cover more of the site than any other use. They're still held to those standards. Um, you know, and also medical clinics, you know, those particular clients are, are, you know, obviously not always in the best of health. And so it's not, those are not the folks that really are able to walk or bike. Or, you know, maybe they're leaving a facility and, you know, they've been medicated and they need, you know, vehicular transportation. So there's lots of things to make that specific use, um, unique. Um, you know, and as Mrs. Scanlon pointed out, you know, these are uses that we've had to do variances for. Um, and if we recognize that they're different and unique, you know, we need to codify that. You know, a variance is not the route that you need to go for when you recognize that a use will have those use of specific needs.
Thank you, Mr. Gerlick. Do we have any more questions from council members? Councilmember Sandberg?
Thank you. Uh, this is for Ms. Scanlon. Is it fair to say that with medical clinics, with the new hospital that's going to be coming online? We are going to see an increase in, in clinic, clinics and, and medical. Facilities and doctor's office around that area where parking is going to be scarce. There's not going to be other options. And I think the point that Mr. Gerlick just made about the use, people who are not in the best of health. Going to doctor's appointments or coming out of, uh, you know, some sort of, uh, surgery situation and needing a driver. That it is critical for us to keep up with the trends. It, any, any evidence to that that you're seeing?
Yeah, I do think, I mean, we have seen, uh. We saw, we've seen the front end of that, right? Where the existing clinics and support services that are around the existing hospital are starting to change over. Uh, and we are expecting that those, they will have to land somewhere and that you're right, that many of those will probably land near the new hospital. Uh, in areas where obviously there's not street parking, you know, uh, out at 10th and the bypass. And, uh, yes, that we, we are anticipating, that's a, a good point, that we are anticipating. That, uh, those uses will migrate, uh, to the east side and northeast side. And so that will be redevelopment, um, uh, in some of those areas, definitely.
Thank you. Councilmember Scambolary?
Yes, thank you. Um, I, I just want to make sure I'm understanding this correctly. So a medical clinic, let's just say a surgery center that's 10,000 square feet. As written, would currently have 50 parking spaces. And per this amendment, it would have 33. Is that correct?
It's the reverse. We're going from 33 to 50. Yes.
Yes, right. Okay, so, and we're not, just to double check myself, we're not differentiating between staff parking spaces and visitor parking spaces. We're just saying parking spaces, period.
Correct.
That would need to accommodate both patients and staff.
Yes.
Yes. That's what I needed. Thank you.
Thank you. Have any further questions?
Uh, I think there's an echo.
There is an echo, but I don't know if it's on.
Sorry, my fault.
You got it? Okay, any further questions from counsel? Seeing none, um, we'll go to. Uh, the public for comments on amendment one for ordinance 21 dash 18. You can please indicate your intent to publicly comment by using the raise hand function on Zoom. Or you can send, uh. A message to our meeting host via chat, the chat function. You see anyone, Mr. Lucas?
I do not know.
Okay, we will now return back to council members for any kind of comments on. Amendment one, ordinance 21 dash 18. Councilmember Rallo?
Uh, as mentioned by Mr. Gerlick, I, I see this use as unique and, and, and probably requires. More spaces. And so I think I will, um, oppose the amendment. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any further comments from counselors? Councilmember Smith?
Yes, I, I, I'm going to oppose the amendment. In my experience, uh, in my previous job. Working with, um, people who were in firm and often clinics really did need a little extra space. People, their mobility is really reduced and as our population ages. It sure seems like, uh, this is just a, a little, a little bit of a, uh, make it easier for. The facility to, uh, have a few extra spaces and, um. Make it easier for the general public and people who need to use it. So I'll be opposing the amendment. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments from counsel? Okay, councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yeah, as much as I hate to, uh. Uh, to have more surface parking, I, um, I will also be opposed to this, voting against this amendment because of the use. As, I mean, even. Uh. The most ardent, uh. Cyclists, if they have access to a car, they're probably going to drive if they feel sick and go to a medical appointment. Um. That said, a bicycle parking should also be required for medical clinics. I had to lock my bike to a lamppost the other day, but anyway. Uh, yeah, I, I'm sorry, I'm, it's, it's hard to vote for more parking, but I, I think I, in this case, I will. Thank you.
Councilmember Volin?
Yeah, I mean, I understand the sympathies that everyone have for patients of medical clinics. But this isn't really about them. I mean, 3.3 spaces per thousand is still a substantial amount of space. What this is about is the practice of the medical clinic. What effort are they making to contribute to the same, uh, goal that, that is imbued. Through our comprehensive plan that is embodied in the climate action plan that we heard tonight. Here we go. Our, we're making a first decision after we've adopted the plan. To increase surface parking when, you know, I, I think that. Uh, the staff is talking about exceptional cases. There have been maybe three, uh, clinics that have called for this. Uh, so we're sort of, uh, you know, just sort of automatically assuming that they can't do anything to optimize the way they use parking. That they can't get their employees to carpool, that maybe their employees don't. I mean, this isn't about parking. This is about free parking. This is about free convenient parking. Uh, one of the principles behind, uh, putting meters downtown was that oftentimes the. Uh, the cars that were using street spaces were the employees of. Um, businesses, and then they wondered why their customers weren't coming because there wasn't any place to park. Surely we can make medical clinics think a little bit before just. Uh, you know, giving them as much parking as they can imagine ever u- using. I mean, there's, um, uh, I know it's not a retail use that would have, that where Black Friday parking would apply. But again, uh, if it's a medical clinic, it's not a hospital. They're not using it 24/7. They're using it during regular medical or business hours. So the most of the time this lot is going to be empty. Uh, so I question why it is that medical clinics can't make more of an effort. To rein in the demand that they have for parking. So I would urge support of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, my comment is, um, I, uh, won't support this either. Our staff has identified a bona fide need. This is a business. And in this particular point, um, and I understand everything else I've heard. It seems like we will are penalizing either the employees. And or the patients in this particular case. So having said that, um, I won't be able to support that. Do we have any further final comments? Seeing none. Will the clerk please call the role on amendment one for ordinance 21 dash 18?
Yes, councilmember Scambolary?
No.
Sims?
No.
Flaherty?
No.
Piedmont Smith?
No.
Smith?
No.
Sandberg?
No.
Rallo?
No.
Volin?
Yes.
And Rosenbarger?
No.
Okay.
Thank you. Amendment one for ordinance 2118 fails one to eight. Okay, now we'll return to counsel for, uh, any further questions on ordinance 21 dash 18 as. Oh, I'm sorry, wasn't amended. I'm sorry. Uh, did we have any other amendments offering? No, okay, then we will go to counsel for any questions on. Amendment 21 dash 18. Seeing none, we will go to the public for any final comments. I'm sorry, on public comment on 21 dash 18. Please utilize the raise hand function in Zoom or send a message to our meeting host via chat. Um, to indicate your intention to speak publicly. You have any takers, Mr. Lucas?
Not that I see, no.
Okay, thank you very much. We'll return to counsel for final comments on ordinance 21 dash 18. Seeing none, will the clerk please call the role?
Yes, councilmember Sims?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Volin?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yeah.
And Scambolary?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ordinance 21 dash 18 is adopted nine zero. We have another piece of legislation for second reading. Councilmember Flaherty?
Mr. President, I move that ordinance 21 dash 22 be introduced.
Mr. President, I move that ordinance 21 dash 22 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Second.
Thank you. It's been properly moved in second. Let the clerk read by title and synopsis only. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Flaherty?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Volin?
Yes.
Rosenbarker?
Yeah.
Scambolari?
Yes.
And Sims?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. And our motion was about the nine zero. Uh, will the clerk please read?
Yes, ordinance 21, 22. To amend title 20 Unified Development Ordinance of the Bloomington Municipal Code Regarding Removal of Residential Estate and Amendment to Residential Large Lot Zoning District Set forth in Bloomington Municipal Code 2002, 2003, 2004, 2005, 2006, and 2007. The synopsis of this is follows. This petition removes the resident, the RE zoning district regulations from the UDO and combines the uses of the RE and R1 zoning districts into the R1 zoning district. Your committee of the whole recommendation is to pass 900.
Councilmember Flaherty.
I move that ordinance 21 dash 22 to be adopted.
Second.
Thank you. It's been properly moved in second. Uh, Mr. Robling, I assume you're presenting.
Uh, yes. Thank you. Uh, this is 21, 22. Uh, so this petition effectively combines the RE and R1, RE residential estate and R1 residential large lot zoning districts uh, by removing the RE district from the code and from the map. Uh, it'll also amend the R1 uses to incorporate a few uses that were allowed in the RE district, but not in the R1 district and map the new R1 district in the previous R1 locations. Uh, this allows for a continued availability of agricultural uses in the RE, or excuse me, from the RE while enabling smaller lot developments of R1. This encourages more realistic urban agricultural scale that the comprehensive plan envisions. Uh, one aspect of the RE is that it created in part, uh, to provide perfect protection for environmentally sensitive areas by limiting subdivisions to 2.5 acre minimum lot size. Switching the minimum lot size, uh, to the R1 standard allows for additional development while still, keeping those existing environmental protections in place just at a slightly smaller scale. Good. Uh, so the planning commission, uh, voted to add all of the uses that are permitted, conditional accessory or temporary from the RE district into the R1 use table. That can be seen here. And, uh, I can answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Robling. We'll go to council for any council questions. Okay, I see none. We'll go to the public for any public comments on ordinance 21 dash 22. I will remind you to, you can either use the raised hand function, via Zoom, or you can send our meeting host a meeting or the chat function. Mr. Lucas, you have any takers?
No, I don't.
Okay, thank you. Seeing none, we'll return to council members for final comments on ordinance 21 dash 22. Okay, seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll on ordinance 21 dash 22?
Yes, councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Volin?
Yes.
Rosenbarker?
Yeah.
Scambolari?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
And Flaherty?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Orness 21 dash 22 is adopted nine zero. I do believe we have legislation for a first reading. Councilmember Flaherty.
Mr. President, I move that ordinance 21 dash 26 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Second.
It has been moved in second that ordinance, um, yes, ordinance 21 dash 26, uh, be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only. Uh, will the clerk please call the roll?
Yes, councilmember Smith?
Pardon me. Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Volin?
Yes.
Rosenbarker?
Yeah.
Scambolari?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
And Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion passes nine oh. Will the clerk please read?
Yes, ordinance 21, 26. To amend title 15 of the Bloomington Municipal Code entitled Vehicles and Traffic Regarding Amending Chapter 1537 To Add a Penalty for Using a Residential Neighborhood Parking Permit in an Unauthorized manner, Section 1537080 To Add a Penalty for Not Displaying a Neighborhood Parking or Visitor Permit When Parked in a Residential Neighborhood Zone And Adding That Penalty to the List of Class G Traffic Violations Section 1537100 To Require Permit Holders to Report Stolen Permits to the Police Before Receiving a Free Replacement And Section 1548010 To Require People Who Have Their Cars Towed After They Have Accumulated Six or More Unpaid Parking Citations To Pay Their Unpaid Citations Before Their Car Will Be Released to Them. The synopsis is as follows. This ordinance amends Title 15 Vehicles and Traffic of the Bloomington Municipal Code And Comes Forth at the Request of City Staff and the Parking Commission. The ordinance makes the following changes. It adds a penalty for using a residential neighborhood parking permit in an unauthorized manner. It adds a penalty for not properly displaying a neighborhood parking permit when parked in a residential neighborhood zone And adds that penalty to the list of Class G traffic violations. It requires permit holders to report stolen permits to the police before receiving a free replacement. It requires people whose cars have been towed because they have accumulated six or more unpaid citations To pay their unpaid citations before their car will be released to them.
Thank you very much for reading that. This president's preference to refer this to the committee of the whole on April 28th, um, starting at 6:30 PM. Okay, seeing nothing else, we are now down to additional public comment. Again, this is allotted a period of 25 minutes if we have any. I would ask on the public to use the raise hand function in Zoom or to send our meeting host, uh, note on chat if you are intended to have any public comment on, I'm sorry, on items not on this tonight's agenda. See any, Mr. Lucas?
I do not know.
Okay, swimmingly. Seeing none, we can address matters of council schedule.
Yes, thank you, and I'll be brief. Two items, uh, the work session for this Friday, the council may want to consider canceling as there are no items, uh, that will be ready for preview, um, in the upcoming legislative cycle. Anyone would like to make a motion to that?
Move to cancel the meeting of April 23rd.
Second.
Second.
Thank you. It's been properly moved in second. Clerk, please call the roll.
Uh, councilmember Sandberg?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Volin?
Yes.
Rosenbarker?
Yeah.
Scambolari?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
And Smith?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. And that motion passes nine oh. Work session, um, scheduled originally for April 23rd. Is that the correct date? Yes, has been canceled. Other matters of council schedule, Mr. Lucas.
Just one last item. The council has a scheduled budget advance next Tuesday, and that is a meeting scheduled as part of the council's annual, uh, 2021 legislative s- schedule. The administration has been communicating with President Sims and has suggested repurposing that meeting to instead allow the council to hear a, a report on the American Rescue Plan funds that may be headed toward uh, the city of Bloomington. And, um, rather than, than, um, hold that budget advance next week, they would like to instead provide you all with some information about that funding and then move the budget advance to sometime in June, um, early June, where they believe it would be more beneficial, uh, for you all, um, to have a discussion about budget priorities and, and goals. Uh, as the administration may have more information by then. So this doesn't require council action, um, but I did want to raise this tonight in case there were any concerns. Uh, a new notice with that, uh, repurposed, uh, topic, uh, for next week. We'll, we'll go out this Friday. So, um, happy to answer any, any questions on that.
Date and time?
Uh, 6:00 PM next Tuesday.
The is April 27th.
Correct.
All right, gotcha. Any further matters of council schedule?
I don't believe so. Thank you.
Thank you. So I don't think there's any other business. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Move we adjourn?
Second.
All right, it's been moved in second. We are adjourned. Thank you all for your patience and your efficiency this evening. Thank you.